The Issaquah City Council Meeting for October 7, 2013 is called to order at 7:00 PM. And the council and I invite those who are present to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item of business this evening is an item of special business, my presentation Tonight I present you with my last proposed budget as mayor. As odd as those words sound, it is a reality. I'm extremely proud to reflect on the last 16 years. No matter the opportunities or challenges that we've faced, Issaquah's vision of building a sustainable community still guides everything that we do. In its essence, a sustainable community encompasses three elements: a commitment to environmental protection, a strong economic base, and an excellent quality of life for our citizens. Back in 1998, as a new mayor, I pledged to be a good steward of the resources that we use every day so that future generations will have a healthy place to live. My proposed 2014 budget reflects that same pledge. This financial roadmap also reflects our strengthening, but still vulnerable, economy by focusing on our essential services as well as using conservative and well-informed On the topic of the environment, one of the three elements of sustainability, Issaquah's dedication to the environment spans decades. The list of initiatives is too long to review tonight, but it includes waste reduction, land preservation, green building, clean mobility, and even urban agriculture. In August of this year, hundreds of our community members gathered under the summer sun to celebrate the opening of Confluence Area Park, the crown jewel of not only our city park system, but of the green necklace encircling Issaquah. Over the decades, and it has taken decades, as we preserve this land piece by piece, we never lost sight of our goal to not only create a beautiful park in the heart of downtown, our historic downtown, but also preserve the critical natural environment surrounding the confluence of the east fork and main stem of Issaquah Creek. Today, we're planning for what's next. My proposed budget includes $1.3 million for enhancing habitat along the nearby stream bank. It is important to note also that in this November, Issaquah voters will decide on a $10 million park bond measure to protect open space and wildlife habitat, improve neighborhood parks, and make repairs to the Julius Bohm Pool. If approved, we will be ready to amend our budget to reflect these new projects. I've also budgeted an additional $35,000 to help us fund several other habitat restoration projects throughout the city, and those include removing invasive plants, reintroducing native vegetation, and mending flood-damaged areas. Moving to our economy, seemingly every week we've been celebrating new businesses opening in Issaquah. Grand Ridge Plaza, the new retail core in the Issaquah Highlands, is bustling with activity. Meanwhile, our new Economic Development Department is diligently working to strengthen Issaquah's economy and create more local jobs. Next year, I've proposed funding to support the city council's goals of developing a tourism business plan in partnership with the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, as well as creating a professional marketing packet in collaboration with our city's Economic Vitality Commission. Our economic development team is also working closely with both Costco and Swedish on development agreements that will mutually benefit all parties. On the valley floor, the team is focused on implementing the first steps of the Central Issaquah Plan, which the council adopted last year, and which will guide the long-term evolution of our commercial core into a more sustainable urban area that will meet our community's needs for environmental protection, jobs, housing, and transportation. Speaking of transportation, this proposed budget supports continued progress toward making roadway improvements along with enhanced bike and pedestrian routes in the north Issaquah area. All of the roads in that area are operating at or near their capacity. These upgrades will significantly help mobility as well as economic development in this particular area. An additional $1.4 million is budgeted to revamp Rainier Boulevard between northwest Juniper Street and Dogwood Street. This project will improve safety, mobility, parking, and access to our new Confluence Area Park. Another $6,200 will be used to continue our Complete Streets program, which boosts safety for pedestrians and cyclists by connecting missing links throughout Issaquah's transportation system. The last element of sustainability, an excellent quality of life for our residents, is a main focus of my proposed budget for next year. Issaquah is still recovering from these challenging economic times. Talk with any of our human service providers who selflessly serve our community members, and it's clear that the need for assistance is significant. In Issaquah, meeting basic human needs is a shared responsibility. For 2014, I propose that Issaquah increase its funding from $8.5 to $9 per capita for its human service agencies, which include everything from the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank to senior services. In total, that amount is close to $300,000. Oftentimes, our local agencies leverage these contributions to receive additional grants so that we know that this investment is one that's multiplied throughout the community. In the past, the city's liaison to human service agencies has served on a part-time basis. Next year, we plan to hire a person full-time to fill this critical role, which will be focused on planning, developing, and managing programs related to human and social sustainability. Another critical factor in our excellent quality of life involves keeping our roads, water mains, and other infrastructure in the best possible conditions. My budget recognizes that this ongoing maintenance and repair is one of our city's most critical tasks. Safety, obviously, is paramount to cultivating an excellent quality of life. Next year, I propose adding an additional patrol officer to our police department to reflect Issaquah's growth and safety needs. This budget also fully funds our east side fire and rescue partners, who provide essential fire and emergency medical services to our community members every day. Providing enhanced levels of service, all while working within a constrained and conservative budget, is a difficult task, and our city team is up for that challenge. Next year, our employees will continue training on how we can provide the best customer service possible that is both efficient and valuable. We're focused on bringing out the best in our employees, who give every resource and ability that they can to make this a wonderful community. This will encourage participation and input at all levels and ensure that everyone works toward common goals and a shared vision. Toward that effort, we plan to upgrade our financial system next year, and that will boost productivity and enhance communications between departments. Fulfilling a city council goal, an additional $55,000 is budgeted to conduct a feasibility study for a city campus. Currently, our staff are located in more than 10 different buildings, which causes inefficiencies and customer service challenges. To help maintain our long-term capital needs, I am proposing a 1% increase in property taxes. Using this year's assessed value, the cost of this increase for a $420,000 home would be $4.20 per year. This small increase won't generate significant revenues for the city in the short term. In fact, the total from that would be, next year, would be $69,707. It will, however, help us build capacity for the future. In a decade, the cumulative effect from this small adjustment could pay large dividends and provide important resources for the city to meet the rising cost of doing business, pay for infrastructure, and match our community's future service needs. My budget maintains existing water, sewer, and stormwater rates; those will be the same. For 2014, my proposed expenditures from the general fund totaled $36,143,940. We will end 2013 with an estimated fund balance of $7.5 million, a bit over $7.5 million in the general fund, which represents 21% of our total expenditures. Meanwhile, the cash reserves through 2014 are expected to remain near current levels. While I have learned many lessons as mayor, one of the most important is this: building a sustainable community takes time, dedication, patience, and an unwavering commitment to continuous improvement. My proposed budget for 2014 keeps this exciting momentum going. Our vision of a sustainable Issaquah, complete with a thriving natural environment, strong economic base, and excellent quality of life for our citizens, is something we continuously strive for year after year, decade after decade. The work is far from done. Moving forward, however, I am confident that we have the right values, wonderful people, and a passion to continue this visionary work for our future generations. Respectfully submitted. Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening are audience comments, and audience comments are an opportunity for the public to address the council on topics of interest or concern to them. Those are items that are not the topic or subject of a public hearing in the evening. There is a public hearing later in the evening having to do with Agenda Bill 6688, the ordinance establishing pre-annexation zoning for the Kohani potential annexation area. So if someone is here to speak to that topic, that would be the time to address that particular issue. But as I've noted, this is an item that is of interest to a member of the public, and there are some criteria or guidelines for participation. We ask that when you are recognized, that you come forward and use the lectern and the microphone so that you may be seen and heard by people who are present in council chambers and also by people who may be viewing this council meeting on Government Access Channel 21. We ask that you state your name, your address, your relationship to the city, if you wish. So if you want to tell us that you are a property owner, or a resident, or involved in the community, whatever it is that you feel is important for us to know, you may do so at that time. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or fewer, and if you have written comments, please provide them for the city clerk. The clerk will be keeping time on the comments and will let you know when you're approaching the end of the time, if you're taking the full five minutes. And then there is somewhat of a side note on audience comments, and that is that we expect people who are speaking to have a level of civility and refrain from commenting personally or attacking people. And I do have the option, as chair of the meeting, of interrupting people if those guidelines are not recognized. And with that, I will ask if there is anyone signed up to speak during audience comments?
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Craig Keller with a mailing address of PO Box 321 Issaquah. I'm a resident, however, of West Seattle, and I'm a very often shopper in Issaquah. I come here tonight with a great sense of gratitude for our democratic system, which allows for citizens to provide input to our government, because we are part of the government, and evidence of tonight, so many people here to talk about various things and listen about things. I'm very grateful because, over the last year, there have been thousands of citizens that have expressed a concern about the regulation of a certain business practice by the retail establishments in this town. Some are exempted, like the food bank that we have an increase in budget proposed for. But the Save Our Choice is the volunteer organization, which I co-founded and I'm a volunteer of, and we are just so grateful to the citizens of Issaquah for having participated in an unprecedented signature collection effort. You might say it's one of the largest town hall efforts that's ever taken place in Issaquah, one-on-one, out in front of stores, at doorsteps, and just very grateful for that. And I've learned a lot. I think a lot of the people in Issaquah have learned a lot, and we have a lot more to learn. Just as a brief, not that you might not be covering this, but very grateful that we achieved 2,597 valid signatures to have a sufficient petition for you, gentlemen and gentleladies, to consider adoption of this legislation or to refer it on to the voters of this city. And it took a lot of work, and it's just been a great effort. It's been a great effort by you folks, too, to talk about this subject. It's not that it hadn't been talked about, but I think perhaps the effects of this regulation have had unforeseen consequences. For example, and this might be of interest for people that are considering Kohani annexation, I can't tell you how many hundreds of people that I've spoken to that said, "Hey, I shop at Kohani QFC now because I can get my bags." And so I think it'd be fantastic if the citizens were to have a choice, or for the council to adopt a repeal of this regulation, because Issaquah has lost business, business that you need to attract more of, to fund the efforts that everyone wants to do. It also would be an opportunity to prove to the residents of Kohani that by incorporating, they're not going to have their shopping bags stolen away from them. You know, it's a small thing, yes, I know, but it's something that might make them feel a little bit more welcomed to your city. Also, again, on the theme of democracy, it's very troubling to me that the sponsor of this bag regulation in the city of Issaquah, Senator Mark Mullet, is now pursuing legislation in Olympia that would muzzle every citizen in this city. If his legislation, Senate Bill 5386, were to have passed, no of the 2,597 signers of this petition would have been able to sign that petition to evidence their grievances, or for even a minority of those who do support the bag ban, but yet they support the citizen's right to vote on that. So I'm troubled by what's happening there in Olympia. This is an opportunity for Issaquah to say, "No, this is not the kind of democracy that we want with that legislation." They have an opportu-- yes, thank you. They'll have an opportunity to express that, "No, we want to have a voice on this." And I'm so grateful for everyone in Issaquah for having made that opportunity a possibility, and I thank you and the council for considering that. I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Oh, are there other people who wish to speak during audience comments on topics other than the Kohani annexation zoning?
Hi, my name is Tom Harmer. I live at 4369 243rd Avenue Southeast in Kohani, and I spoke last time about the Kohani on the zoning proposal, which is too dense, but I wish to speak on other issues that are not connected with the zoning proposal but are certainly part of it. The dense zoning is going to be one of the reasons that this is probably going to go down in an election. Samamish incorporated because of the dense King County zoning. This is Seattle zoning, not suburban zoning that we're accustomed to. Bonded indebtedness. Take off the bonded indebtedness. I think there was any reason you learned in 2005 that people are going to say no to the bonded indebtedness. But I finally went through the Nesbit Study, and the reason why people voted for annexation and against bonded indebtedness is because the property tax saving is one of the big issues for voting for it, and people figured out, "If I vote against bonded indebtedness, I will get even a further property tax saving." And looking at the Nesbit Study, page 18, I had to do a little bit of calculated work, but not much. It's a saving of $79.82 a year on a $320,000 house, so it could be even less on the property tax issue as far as that's concerned. Thirdly, we really, I think, most people in Kohani encourage the community municipal corporation, or what's oftentimes referred to as community councils. It gives people in Kohani a voice as the future of their community, particularly in the years before they could get people on the city council. So we strongly urge community councils in this. Talking about the issue, been accused of in 2005 of lying, false information, mistreatment of the facts, and other things, along confusing people, I have here a blog from the Kohani Annexation Group, of which Rob Young says, and I quote, "A $600,000 home here will save approximately $1,000 in property tax." Going to the Nesbit Study on page 19, and it says it'll be a $383 saving on a $320,000 house. That equates to $598,000 on a $500,000 house. Secondly, so a $600,000 home would basically come out to $718 saving, not $1,000. A $500,000 home will save over $800 a year, where the Nesbit Study says that a $500,000 home will save $598. And also, he says, paying approximately $500 a year more as the taxes are higher in our northern neighbor than Samamish. It's one of those things where you think you're letting people know that your property taxes will go up if you were to annex to Samamish instead of Issaquah. True, Issaquah has a better property tax deal than Samamish, but both are under what they're paying now. So it's always one of the things that figures keep coming out and letting us know, you know, I think people want facts when you can go right into the Nesbit Study and do that. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews. Everybody's wringing their hands about what's going on in Washington, D.C., and how terrible it is that all this money is being wasted and things aren't getting done. Then they look at local government, and we got water sewer wars going on, we got fire wars going on, and we got two cities in an annexation battle. We're not looking much better than Washington, D.C. at this point. Now, one of the items on your agenda tonight is the fire station purchase. The Nesbit Study looks at, and comes out, and when you figure out the equivalent of about .64 cents per thousand for fire service for Kohani. If you go and start looking, like I did, I chose 10 residential structures up there at random. Turns out, they're paying about $1.70 for fire. That's the tax in the benefit service charge. One place came out at $1.60, one residential, but most of them came out at $1.70, and residential, all of them came out of close to $1.70. Where is the money going to come from to purchase this fire station? Either by District 10, which is going to lose, well, the city is proposing to spend about $1.2 million less than District 10 is now collecting from Kohani. So there's a real issue there about how much can you raise the taxes on the rest of the people in District 10 when Kohani is lost, because that is a real tax benefit area for District 10. The rest of it is pretty rural, spread out, and very hard to serve. Kohani is their moneymaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak during audience comments who hasn't had an opportunity?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Kristi Triple at Raleigh Properties, 1595 Northwest Gilman Boulevard here in Issaquah. I'm here with my Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce hat on to say thank you to the community and, in celebration of another wonderful Salmon Days event, thank you to all of you who helped make it happen, to Festival Chair and Council Member Eileen Barber and the amazing festivals committee, to Robin Kelly for her leadership and the Chambers Festival Committee, to Virginia Mason for their title sponsorship, to Sammy the Salmon for all of his guest appearances out in Washington State and for helping to bring those salmon home to the hatchery, and to all of the countless volunteers in this community who took time out of their schedule to either attend the event or to volunteer. Nothing makes me more proud than to see generations come back, year after year, to volunteer and to participate in such a wonderful festival that this community happens to have. So it's amazing celebration, and also thank you to all the businesses and the 70 local nonprofits that participated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak during audience comments? There's going to be a public hearing on the zoning, the pre-annexation zoning for the Kohani potential annexation area, but this is the opportunity for people to speak on other topics. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing and hearing no one else who wishes to speak during audience comments, audience comments are closed. The next item on the agenda this evening are committee and regional reports, and I will start with Councilmember Forkner. And I think before I do that, however, I will notice that Councilmember Goodman is excused this evening. She's not here, and she is excused. Councilmember Forkner.
Thank you. The Council Infrastructure Committee met Tuesday, September 24. We talked about Agenda Bill 6713, an AT&amp;T lease agreement amendment that's on tonight's consent agenda. We talked about Agenda Bill 6712, Raleigh Properties Agreement Amendment for Fordy's Zone-- Zone Reservoir, which is on tonight's agenda on regular business. We had a discussion about Agenda Bill 6708, the major amendment to Issaquah Highlands' two-party development agreement. Also discussed Agenda Bill 6715, resolution adopting of the Eastside Transportation Partnership Mobility Action Priorities, which is also on tonight's consent agenda. We had a discussion about the food packaging and also a discussion and presentation on the Capitol Facilities Plan Review. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday of this week, October 10th, at 5:30 in the Pickering Room. On the agenda is the discussion about the 2014 solid waste rates and an update on Agenda Bill 6562, the Water System Plan Update. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Martsch?
No report.
Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The Eastside Transportation Partnership will meet this Friday, October 11th. It will be meeting at the Bellevue City Hall, which is a change from our normal location. We will have a presentation on Sound Transit's Long Range Plan Update and ST3 Development. There will also be a legislative discussion reporting on the transportation listening tour and a report from our Legislative Subcommittee. We also expect to have a report from our Procedures Subcommittee and a Transportation Policy Board report. The meeting will run from 7:30 to approximately 9:00 a.m. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Services and Safety Committee met on October 3rd. There was a number of items before us that evening. The first was a presentation in regards to the Drug Free Committee Community Coalition Grant. The city will be acting as the fiscal agent in regards to this. We reviewed Agenda Bill 6719, the 2014 nonprofit fundings. We had a great presentation from 14 different agencies throughout our community. These are all a little bit different. This had typically been reviewed by the entire Budget Committee, and it is now being reviewed by the Services and Safety. We are recommending to move this forward, and it is on this evening's consent agenda. The next item we discussed is Agenda Bill 6684, which is financial policies. There was just a few—that was a holdover from our previous meeting, just to go back through a little bit of the wording that was in there, and that is now also on the consent agenda this evening. The last item we had before us was a Fire and Emergency Services, and that is in regards to—let me find the page—a review in regards to the resolutions. There's two resolutions. One that was from Eastside Fire—uh, one is from District 10, and the other is also from the city of Issaquah. So we'll be reviewing those also later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. On September 18th, the Board of the Eastside Human Services Forum met. And among the items that we discussed, we had a presentation from a representative from the Seattle Public Health Department on the Affordable Healthcare Enrollment Efforts. And my assessment that between their efforts and the county's efforts are really going to provide assistance to many of our own residents who will take advantage of the new Affordable Healthcare Enrollment Plan. And so that enrollment has started, and those who want to go to the exchange can actually have it through March 1st of next year to enroll. And more on that will be coming forward. We also heard of reports over the last couple of years, even this city, the city of Issaquah and our neighboring cities have helped fund both a women's and men's winter shelters. And there is a winter shelter for women this year here on the east side, but they do not have a location for a men's shelter. And so this is definitely an area of concern and something that we may need to take a look at to see if there's anything extraordinary that we can do. And I do know that other non-municipality and other kind of regional groups are being approached as well. And then—and I'll just mention, too, there's a change, and I'm just—I guess this is a heads up, I know that as we develop our legislative agenda for 2014, there's an issue regarding the—uh, let me find it here—the—well, there's—hold on, I'm looking at my notes. I'll find it here in a second. I'll have to get back to you on that. There's a family housing coalition change to that law that's being considered that'll dramatically impact—there's over 4,000 families on the waiting list for housing assistance. And the changes to the laws will effectively remove about 2,800 of them immediately. And they don't even know it now. So there's a real potential walking disaster here for those families who are homeless currently waiting for assistance and looking for—they perhaps they're living with a relative and sleeping on people's couches, and that they may lose their eligibility for family housing assistance based on some law changes being considered in Olympia right now. So that's kind of a heads up on a topic that I think we'll be hearing more about. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier, you heard the mayor present the preliminary or proposed budget for 2014. As a part of that Agenda Bill 6690 is the council review schedule listed, along with the topics that each of the work sessions will cover. The first of those is scheduled for October 14th here in Council Chambers, beginning at 6:00. The 2nd October, the 24th, same location, beginning at 5:30. And October the 29th—excuse me, October 24th is at 6:00, October 29th at 5:30, all here in Council Chambers. So I believe everyone has gotten a copy electronically or in the binder also. If not, it can be picked up at your mailbox over in City Hall across the street. Sound Cities Association applications for regional participation in those boards and commissions that the Sound Cities Association has the responsibility fulfilling, I believe, were due today. So there are a few hours left, or if you cannot get to it this evening, I would encourage you to do so within the next day or so, so that the city of Issaquah is well represented regionally in those areas. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Martsch?
I'm sorry, I realized that I'll be subbing for Councilmember Goodman for Land and Shore this month, which is tomorrow, starting at 5:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. And we will be reviewing Agenda Bill 6708, Major Amendment to Issaquah Highlands Two Party Development Agreement, and new development agreement for Highlands Blocks 29 through 42. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Mayor's report for this evening. There will not be an executive session held this evening. Next item. As noted, Salmon Days was a huge success. The council's adopted policy of having excellent weather carried through, and it was bright and sunny and very nice. We hosted hundreds of thousands. We never know the exact count, but we have estimates, and it was somewhere between 150 and 200,000. So some people are saying 180,000, I believe. But many visitors, and that included several guests, a council member, and artists, and some students from our sister city of Chef Chauvin, Morocco. And they always marvel at Salmon Days, and that so much is done through volunteerism, because that isn't the model everywhere in the world. Very impressive to them. Earlier today, I note that our police worked with the Issaquah School District after a caller reported a man with a rifle near Issaquah High and nearby schools. And while the schools were placed in lockdown, our officers responded quickly. They conducted a search. They interviewed the person who had provided that information and the subject of that. And fortunately, police determined that the man was actually carrying an umbrella. This response shows that we take things very seriously. Safety is a high priority in our community. We work very closely with our schools. And so, you know, immediate action was taken to make sure that everyone was safe, and people were. Later this week, I'll be representing the city regionally at a Regional Coalition for Housing, the organization we belong to, which helps us with affordable housing issues, and then EPSCA, the Eastside Public Safety Communications Agency. And we are a early member of that organization and one of the five voting entities on that organization, which works on the topic of providing emergency radio service and access in our subarea. That concludes the mayor's report. Next this evening, I will ask the council if the accounts, payables, and payroll have been reviewed.
They have.
Yes. All right. And then I will ask the council's pleasure on the adoption of the consent calendar, the consent agenda. Councilmember Butler?
I would move approval of the consent calendar with several minor changes to the September 9th Council Committee work session, that I believe the clerk has those minor changes noted.
So the inclusion of the 6:40 ending time?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Second?
All right. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, that passed unanimously. The next item before the council this evening is a public hearing on Agenda Bill 6688, an ordinance establishing pre-annexation zoning for the Kohani PAA. There was a public hearing—the first public hearing, of which there must be two—was held on September 3rd in front of the city council. This is the second opportunity. And after staff presentation and council discussion, the potential—the pre-annexation zoning would not be established, but there would be a resolution directing the preparation of that zoning. So with that, I will ask for our staff presentation. Welcome, Trish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to do a short presentation so we can get on with the public hearing, but I wanted to remind you of a few things and go through some of the questions that we received at the last public hearing. I think you all know the background by now. You all have been doing this for a while now. Back in 2012, when an unofficial petition came in, and then the council decided to redo the study, and we began the fiscal study. We organized a task force from the Kohani neighborhood and some existing citizens to sort of fact-check and review the study as it moved on. We had outreach from the council at—both out of this chambers and also at the Challenger Elementary. The fiscal study was completed, and you all told us to move forward with a resolution of intent to annex. And then we went to the boundary review board, and that's where part of this process is. And this is a separate process to work on the pre-annexation zoning. Again, there's been a lot of outreach. I think most everyone in the area knows that we're working on—we're working on this project. We've been doing a thoughtful and responsible, I think, outreach to folks and trying to make sure that all the voices are heard. As the mayor said, pre-annexation zoning is something that the city has been doing for many, 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 many years, as it's gone through its annexation process since the early '90s in support of growth management goals. We have a chart in the land use code that has King County zoning and city zoning that are as comparable as they can be, given that we do our math a little differently than the county. But we adopted that many years ago when we started this, so that communities would know what they would be zoned if, in fact, they were annexed to the city. The comparable zoning for the Kohani area is in this chart here. There are two zones, and the county R6 and R8, that would receive one of our zoning, the single-family small lot, which is 7.26 units per acre. And also, the R12 and R18 would both be our medium—multifamily medium, which is 14.52 units per acre. One reason that we zone—we like to zone the new areas a little bit higher than their existing zone versus going lower, is if anything should happen to those properties, we do not want them to be non-conforming. So that if—as happened to our house—if trees fall on your house and you have to get your insurance to help you rebuild them, you don't want them to be non-conforming because that harms the property owner and how they can rebuild. Also, if you should want to put an addition or a deck or something like that on your existing home, you don't want to be encumbered by a smaller lot size or lower-density zoning and not be able to do that. So that's why if we—when we're choosing what the comparable zoning is, and there's a choice, and they're both relatively close, we go to the higher zoning, just so that they don't have that non-conforming situation. And I'll do some actual examples toward the end. The process for pre-annexation zoning is two public hearings. You had your first one more than 30 days ago, and you gave me some questions to follow up on that I'm answering tonight. And as—you can tell us tonight if you want changes to the zoning that you have in your packet. And then in two more weeks, at your next regularly scheduled meeting, is when we would ask you to take action on the pre-annexation zoning. The existing zoning—the colors came out pretty well on this one. The—okay, this little subdivision right here is the only residential eight, is the only R8 in the whole area. Just if there was some confusion on where is the R8? It's just this little 20—I think there's 28 lots. It's a little subdivision of townhomes. I think it was planted in 88, but it's sort of a different zone. The rest of them, the R4 are the sort of clear, more clearer yellow. The R1 is down here. It's the only change since the 2005 pre-annexation zoning, that's the Eastside Christian Church. The rest, 12—there's a little bit of 12 here, which is a condo, some condos, and there's also some 12 up in here. These big chunks of brown are multifamily, some of them are condos, and those are the R18. And then this is the QFC Shopping Center, which is community business. The comparable zoning for the city, much of the same colors, although the—
I think Councilmember Winterstein had a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Could you go back to the previous—the previous slide? So residential—R4. I see there's some areas. Are any of those areas in the—I see they're in the PAA, but are they in the Kohani neighborhood per se?
I don't see any from here. These are outside, and these are outside.
Yeah, that's my assessment as well. So there's nothing currently in Kohani?
That's R4?
That's R4.
I think you're correct.
So, okay. So we had heard some testimony last time that it was all zoned to be four units per acre, but I don't see that anywhere.
And that seemed to be what they were asking to be. They were asking to be single-family suburban, which is sort of our R4. And again—
But existing, there's no R4 in Kohani.
Right. And our answer would be that that would make a lot of them non-conforming, and I think they would have problems down the road. And as I'll get to in another slide, there's very few vacant parcels left on this map. I mean, you see a lot of these tracks are open space tracks that are protected no matter what. There's nothing we can do, nothing anybody can do unless they go through in a horrendously difficult process to change them. There's three parcels that we found that were actually vacant. That's this one, sort of with a tooth out of it, this little square right here. And then there's a teeny tiny one in here somewhere. And then there's a teeny tiny one in here somewhere. This one has, doesn't have a lot on it that could redevelop fairly soon, but for the most part, everything is built out, and, and they're built out with, with pretty nice, pretty nice houses that are well over the building to land ratio that would cause you to, to make your economics better if you're like 50% of your improvements to land value. And these are all at 100 or up to 200% of the value. So economically, I don't think these houses are coming down anytime soon, because they're all, for the most part, all the research we did, it would be really difficult economically to take them down and build them back to, to get that extra bit of zoning. But I get into some scenarios from your questions later on in the presentation. Does that help, the question that you had?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. This was one of the council questions about Yellow Lake and the environmental tracks, and so we did the air photo. This is Yellow Lake right here, and all of the green space around it, the green tracks all the way up into here. Even that little R8 that I showed you has little tracks on either side of it to, to protect it. It's just a lot of critical areas that go on, or else they're water, water easements for stormwater. But when you look at a map and see that they're vacant, they're not vacant to be developed, they're vacant that, that nothing can happen on them. And again, they're zoned R6 in the county, but you can't develop them like R6. Were there, and the tract, I actually have the tract on the map of what the tract conditions are, that you can't change, you know, that they're open space in perpetuity, and nobody can change them unless you actually go in and, and change the plat somehow, which would be very, very, very difficult. Were there any further questions on the environmental piece? Okay. There was a question also if the BRB, the boundary review board process, had to have our zoning process finished before we could move on with boundary review. And no, they're not in conflict. The boundary review board looks at different objectives in their decision-making than the pre-annexation zoning. They look at neighborhoods and boundaries and geography and those kinds of things, not the, not the zoning. There any more questions on that? Okay. These questions just came this weekend. How many parcels of R6 are there, and how many acres and how many units, and also with R8? These are the two that would come as single-family small lot at 7.26 dwelling units per acre. As you could tell from the map, there's a lot of R6. They're all, and these don't include the environmental tracks. There's about, you know, one parcel gets a, a house on it, except there's one parcel, at least one parcel that has condos on it. So we've averaged, we figured there's probably 2,500 units in R6, and that was sort of a back of the napkin with GIS. And our GIS person was only there part-time today, so we were doing some real scrambling. R8 was pretty easy. It's just that one little subdivision of townhomes, 28 parcels, 28 townhomes. And then when you asked the question, how would you, if I'm zoned R6, how would I get that extra density? Well, if I happened to be on that bigger parcel that was eight acres, I would just come in and subdivide it, and I'd get maybe up to 55 units on that, if it's unencumbered. That's, the vacant parcels would be the same process as we would have now. If it wasn't a vacant parcel, though, you would have to, and those are the, the three vacant parcels that I sort of pointed out in the other one. If I wasn't vacant, what I would have to do is I would have to buy at least two of the parcels, and they'd have to be adjacent to each other, and maybe three, I'd have to get up to 18,000 square feet, because the minimum lot size is 6,000. So I'd have to buy at least two or three to get to that amount, and then I would have to take down those two or three houses and then build for four. And again, the, the houses are, are pretty valuable now, and so economically, I don't think you would see anybody doing that for a long, long time to get that, that extra bit of density. So are there questions on, on at least the process that you would go through? Or the likelihood of... There it is in words. It's not as exciting in words as it is in a picture. So after tonight, you're going to hear probably some more testimony, and some sirens are going to go off. And if you have other questions that you want us to ask, or changes that you want to make to the pre-annexation zoning ordinance, you can let us know, and then we would have everything ready for you for the next meeting on the 21st. And again, it would only be applied if in fact it gets annexed. Are there questions for me, or questions?
Yes, Councilmember Mertz.
So I have a question about those 28 units that are R8?
Yes.
So you mentioned that if you're going from a higher unit per acre to a lower unit per acre, you can run the risk of being non-conforming?
Mm-hmm.
So is that a risk for those units?
They, because they're townhomes, and they, the configuration is, is, is pretty interesting anyway. I think if they were to come in to get, you know, a deck or a, they're such an anomaly in that they're the only zone, that I think we would try to work with them, you know, especially if they burn down or something happened like that, we would work with them on, or trees fell on them or something. Because they don't fit in a lot of ways. It's not just the lot size and the type of unit that's on it. But we, but again, they, they would be, they would be non-conforming, because the lot is smaller than what they have now. As an R8, and ours would be R7. That there would be that bit of a difference.
City Attorney Tanaka.
Yes, just to clarify, the, the lots would be undersized according to the zoning. The use, unless there was a prohibition in our zoning on townhomes, which I don't think there is...
No, there's no prohibition.
The use would be legal, the same as it is now. Therefore, if the townhome burned down, or was destroyed or something, and they wanted to rebuild, it would be legal to build another townhome. But since the lot size is smaller, in order to, or the, the minimum, they're smaller than the minimum, according to the zoning, it may be more difficult to meet the setbacks and other, you know, strictures, perhaps, I don't know. But there would be no question that their use would be legal, continue to be legal.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, on that data, it's such, it's a small area. I think you said there are four acres, and there's, that are...
For vacant?
No, that have the R8 zoning today. I think you did earlier.
Oh, right. It's just this...
Twenty-eight units. So, so that's an average of, you know, seven units per acre, which is currently below the cap, just in aggregate, of the, of the, of the capacity of eight. And our zoning would change that, if it was ever applied, to 7.26. So it's still currently above the current use, at least in aggregate.
Right, right. And even this little lot that's smaller than 6,000 square feet, which is the minimum, because you're allowed a reasonable use of your property, we would still let them build one unit. It would just have to be, like, we have existing lots that are sort of, that don't fit the right lot size, that they're still allowed to build one lot. And we've had some of those go to the hearing examiner, and the hearing examiner upholds that yes, you can build one. So even that little one could. Are there other questions on? Okay. Do you want the map up, or any special piece up while people are testifying, or no? Okay.
Is it helpful to leave the map up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Good. Good. With that, the public hearing is being opened at 7:59, and I will go through the criteria for the public hearing. These are essentially the same as you heard under audience comments. We ask that when you're recognized, please use the lectern and the microphone. State your name, your address. If you wish to give a relationship to the city that you feel is helpful for the council to know, please do so. We further ask that your comments be limited to five minutes or fewer, and you will be timed on those comments. If you have written remarks, please feel free to submit them to the city clerk. And with that, the public hearing is open. All right. I will ask if there are any people present who wish to speak during the public hearing, wish to testify. Anyone who wishes to testify during the public hearing? Anyone who wishes to testify during the public hearing? It's the third call. I want to give every possible opportunity for people to speak during the public hearing on the potential annexation area zoning. Seeing and hearing no people who have asked to speak during this public hearing. The public hearing is closed at one minute after 8 o'clock. And now is the opportunity for the council to discuss this, ask additional questions, and do what, do what it is you wish to do. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. So we got some really valuable comments last month. I appreciated that. So I thought it was important to, to dig in and understand the situation with, and I appreciate the empirical data that was provided to help us with that. In particular, I heard a request that what we were, what currently designated R6 to change that, we were, the pre-annexation zoning is for the single-family small lot density for, of our zoning laws, which would be 7.26 units per acre. So I was curious, and so the, so the request was, can we, instead of single-family small lots, maybe our zoning should be single-family suburban, which is the 4.5 houses per unit. So what I just saw, in aggregate, again, what I, the data we just got, is that there's an, of the 25, roughly 2,500 units, over 531 acres of R6 today, that averages about 4.7 units per acre, which is below the, the possible designation. So you're current, so I'm just learning this, I'm looking at the data for the first time. So there currently exists the, the capacity to go denser in aggregate. And also, to go, to change that instead to single-family suburban would be of four and a half units per acre, would go below the current average. So we, there's, so anyway, that, that's just some new data. That's the data I didn't have a month ago. We have that now. I appreciate that. I think that's very informative, and so I just wanted to share that with, with my fellow council members. I think that assessment's important. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Any other questions? Is the council ready to move something on this? Councilmember Butler? Are you contending?
Yeah. Land and Shore Chair isn't here.
That's, and so, but there are two, but there are two members of Land and Shore, of which I am one, and I would move to direct the administration to prepare the final ordinance establishing pre-annexation zoning for the Klahani potential annexation area, returning to the full council on October 21st, 2013, for action. Second.
All right, moved by Butler and seconded by Mertz. Now, another opportunity for discussion or questions.
Yeah, may I?
Yes.
Yeah, I, so... I thought this was a fruitful public process. The comments from a month ago were taken seriously, and, and I just want to express my gratitude for those that participated, took that information into consideration, and just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. Is the council ready to act upon this motion, as just stated? All those in favor, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, that was five in favor and one in opposition. Councilmember Share in opposition. The next item to come before the council this evening for action is Agenda Bill 67, 6712, Rowley Properties Agreement Amendment for the 480 Zone Reservoir. And this is in response to some changes to the 480 Zone Reservoir and the necessity for having such a reservoir. And we have staff here to present, but first I will look to the Infrastructure Committee Chair, Councilmember Forkner.
Thank you. On October 21st, 2002, the city council approved Agenda Bill 4935 for the cost sharing of a new 1.25 million gallon 480 Zone Reservoir with Rowley Property, Rowley Enterprises as part of the Kalkari Master Site Plan. Due to the cost, neighborhood, and environmental impacts, the administration has developed an alternative way to address the fire storage deficiencies in the 480 operating zone without the need to construct the previously planned reservoir. That is, to construct a pump station with capacity to provide fire flows from the 297 operating zone, which has fire storage available. The purpose of this amendment is to allow Rowley Enterprises to pay $400,000 of its share in the cost of the pump station to accommodate the required fire flows, which would mitigate the Kalkari Master Site impact on fire storage. When Kalkari was originally permitted, there was a need for additional fire flow. The, the picture there shows you the, the line between the Mount Hood and the Wildwood tanks areas. Because of the configuration, and because it was a multifamily, multifamily residential development, the, the initial findings was that we should provide two additional reservoirs to allow fire protection and fire flow for this. At the time, Rowley installed that 12-inch water main that, that went through there, and at that time, the decision was made that we could probably get by with just one additional reservoir for fire flow. Because of the cost and the environmental impacts, the facts that, the fact that that's all on hills and, and slopes and things like that, over the years, different ideas have come forward, and, and what has become the most probable way to treat this now is the Mount Hood Pump Station, which is over there at, or Mountain Park Pump Station, which is at the top, is going to be rebuilt. It's a, it's an older pump station, and the, the plans are to rebuild that. And in the process of rebuilding that, they're going to put in a fire pump system, so that in case of reduced flows in the system because of a fire, it will activate and it will pressurize the system and provide more water for fire flow. So instead of having a gravity feed to provide fire flow, there'll be a pressure feed to provide that fire flow. And, and the, the cost of that, $400,000 of that is going to be provided by Rowley Enterprises. As long as, as long as the city does not do anything to, to deny the master site plan for, for the, further expansion of Kalkari, this will stand in place. Even if Rowley decides not to pursue the, the further development of Kalkari, the money would still be due. If for some reason the city denies the, the development of Kalkari, then the, it would, it would, a refund would have to be provided by the city. So with that, I will move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the amendment number one to the agreement for cost-sharing 480 Zone Reservoir.
Second.
Moved by Forkner and seconded by Mertz. And is there now information that the council would like to hear in a staff presentation?
Hey, Joe did a great job.
So, still have people present for any answers, if you wish them, but... Still have people present for any answers if you wish them, but the council has before it the motion, and I will ask the council for discussion, questions, deliberation. Yes, Councilmember Barber.
Do we know what the potential number of units that are still available on the Kalkari parcel?
I believe it's 160 some units.
Are these multifamily?
Yes.
And the steps we would be taking to increase the water flow now would also be capable in handling the additional 180?
Excuse me, it was 126 units, it looks like, that's available, so.
And there would be no—that—there would be no problem in handling that—those additional units in regards to any potential fire issues?
Correct. And we would be taking the storage from the valley floor, so we got plenty of storage there. And that's why we're using the pump to take it from that storage area. If we were taking it from the other reservoirs, yes, there would be some capacity issues.
Thank you. Any other questions? Additional discussion? Is the council ready then to act upon the motion to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute Amendment Number One, the agreement for cost-sharing the 480 Zone Reservoir? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. The next item before the council under regular business is Agenda Bill 6733, a resolution regarding commitment to fire and emergency services. This resolution, I understand, was before the Safety and Services Committee recently. And so I will ask if the chair of that committee would like to speak to this topic.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have a walk-on, and we discussed this in committee on October 3rd. King County Fire and Deputy Chief Tryon is with us this evening, so if we have further questions, we can call upon Deputy Chief Tryon to help fill in. So King County Fire Protection District 10 on October 3rd had presented a resolution to us. And this resolution—if I can read through some of it—whereas King County Fire Protection District 10 has provided fire service to the Kohani area since 1941, whereas the Fire District has continued to provide fire and EMS services through Eastside Fire and Rescue Partnership since 1999, and has committed to a long-term relationship with that partnership. And whereas the citizens have been best served by this cooperative regional relationship, and where else concerns have recently been raised about the future of the fire service within this area regarding a potential annexation by the City of Issaquah and/or potential withdrawal from the Eastside Fire and Rescue Partnership by the City of Samamish. And whereas the City of Samamish has declared at a recent Boundary Review Board hearing the possibility of closing Fire Station 83, the Kohani Fire Station, and whereas the Board of Commissioners are committed to continuing a high current level of service within this area, and therefore, they resolved—for this resolution 201303. So the City of Issaquah—and we had some discussions that evening—as there is a great concern in regards to what potentially would be happening with Kohani, and wanting to assure the citizens of that area as Eastside Fire and Rescue that they are and will be well-maintained and service to them will not be reduced. So the City of Issaquah now is also putting forward, and that's what's before us this evening, and this is resolution—we don't have a number yet—but basically saying somewhat the same thing, that we are currently a member of Eastside Fire and Rescue. The other partners that we partner now with in Eastside Fire and Rescue is District 10, District 38, North Bend, the City of Samamish. And we also are speaking in regards to information that was presented to the Boundary Review Team Board, excuse me, in regards to the Kohani annexation. There was indications at this particular meeting that concerns regarding the City of Samamish may choose to withdraw. And then we went on to discuss—the resolution we'll discuss—Station 83 is currently owned by the City of Samamish and provides service to certain areas of Issaquah, certain areas of Fire District 10, and also to the City of Samamish. Fire District 10, as I've already read to you, has adopted their resolution indicating the desire to acquire this fire station if and when the City of Samamish would withdraw from Eastside Fire and Rescue. And the City of Issaquah is also committed to providing, through Eastside Fire and Rescue, a current level of service to the residents of Issaquah and to the Kohani PAA if they would become part of our city. So the city is committed to the current Eastside Fire and Rescue Partnership. We support all the residents and their current partners, and we are in reviewing at this moment the interlocal expiring at the end of this year. So we've been working for quite some time in regards to—we've had a number of meetings where we've been working on a strategic plan. We've been working through critical factors, success, and we are a committed—the City of Issaquah is committed to that partnership. We are committed to making sure that we keep the citizens of our community safe and the citizens of any potential annexed cities safe and well-served for fire and EMS services. So that's the resolution for us this evening. So if there are further questions or further comments, Deputy Chief Tryon, you're welcome to add anything.
Are there additional questions from amongst the council members? Yes, Councilmember Share.
I'd be happy to wait until there's a resolution before us to ask.
All right. Certainly.
I would then like to move to approve Resolution Number 2013-12 regarding commitment to fire and emergency services.
Second.
Okay. It was moved by Barber and seconded by Winterstein. Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions, and maybe Deputy Chief could assist us. So my first question is, the portion of Issaquah that Station 83 currently serves, could you explain to us and the public where it is we're talking about that the coverage area would include?
As soon as this pops up, I can probably show you a picture of it.
You could probably have a crew to one of the service areas by the time that comes up.
Yes. So this is roughly the potential annexation area of Kohani. This is what we call Fire Station, if you read the Kohani Fire Station. It was provided as part of the mitigation for the build-out of the Kohani neighborhoods. So it protects parts of the City of Samamish, the unincorporated areas, which are protected by Fire District 10, which is a member of Eastside Fire and Rescue. It protects City of Issaquah property, which we call Providence Point. They're the closest station to that. So you're seeing this rough area that Fire District—uh, the 83 covers.
So my next question is, in looking at the resolution, I'm trying to understand paragraph two. So paragraph one talks about providing the current level of service if there were an annexation, and paragraph three talks about providing—maintaining current service levels in the event of one of the partners withdrawing—not named, but it's in the whereas. So paragraph two, is that statement that the city is supportive of Fire District 10 purchasing Station 83 and contributing a fair share, is that contingent on the events in one, the events in three, or both events?
Fire District 10 and their resolution has—my apologies, I've spent all day in a river, so I'm kind of cold. Fire District 10 has committed to that regardless of what the annexation process that the city is going through happens, that recognizes that the Kohani areas, the areas currently served by 83, are their citizens as a matter of record. So their commitment is, is that they would find whatever way to maintain the level of service that's going on. So one of those options being requesting that if the City of Samamish were to vacate that building, that they would have the opportunity to purchase, or some other plan would come up that they would be part of as it relates to maintaining the service levels of that community.
So it sounds like, from your answer, that the statement in two, the city being supportive of the purchase, is contingent on Samamish's withdrawal, but it's irrespective of the annexation process?
Correct. Nothing would happen without the withdrawal.
Okay. And I think that's consistent with the resolution from District 10 that's part of the Agenda Bill. And I guess that I can query my colleagues on this, whether it would make more sense to clarify Statement Number Two, to have the same language that the District 10 resolution has, which is where it says, "In the event the City of Samamish chooses to withdraw from EFNR, then the city is supportive of purchasing current Station 83." Because otherwise, as written, the resolution essentially sounds like we're supportive of purchasing Station 83, but it doesn't explain under what circumstances or set of facts that support would occur. So it's hard to tell when you have one talking about annexation and three talking about Samamish leaving, what two—which one of those two actually pertains to? So I'm—it—it just seems a little unclear to me, and maybe saying it more clearly would be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Winterstein. Councilmember Forkner, sorry.
The—I—I understand what you're saying. Because of the dynamics of what's going on with Eastside Fire and Rescue, the possibility could exist that Samamish could stay in Eastside Fire and Rescue and still decide that they don't want to close that station. So there are a lot of things going on that if that happens, the City of Issaquah is going to—even if we don't annex Kohani and they abandon that station, we still have to do something for the Providence Point area. So—I don't think this should be contingent on whether there's an annexation or not and whether Samamish pulls out or not. I think the idea is to leave the options open to be able to provide service for at least the Providence Point area if Kohani doesn't happen. So I think leaving it the way it is, where it has the ability to move it in any direction, is probably more advantageous for the city than to say only if this happens or only if that happens.
Councilmember Share.
Okay. If I can just follow up, then—I completely understand what you're saying, but that's not what District 10's resolution says, because there says, "In the event Samamish chooses to withdraw and close Fire Station 83." So in reading that, it made it sound to me like both of those events would have to occur before District 10 would request a first right of purchase of the facility. And so what you're saying makes perfect sense, but District 10 didn't put what you're saying in their resolution. So I—I don't know how to reconcile that, but I—I guess it's clear perhaps to us then what we'd be resolving. I—I guess I have one other question then, which is, in terms of the cost to the city to be in support of paying the city's quote-unquote "fair share," do we have a general idea of what that would entail, or is it cheaper or more expensive than going out and building a new station to service a different area? Why does this make the most sense?
E, all of the above. Specifically, if—and this is speaking from Eastside Fire and Rescue—if we could say that the City of Issaquah and the City of Samamish were going to be in some sort of relationship for fire and EMS services for 20 to 30 years, we would suggest that we move stations around to better serve our community. But it doesn't make sense to spend that money now in seven-year increments. So the next thing would be is that right now, the City of Issaquah, their share of the 83's cost is roughly just under 7% of the total cost of Station 83. But if Samamish chose to withdraw, went through a number of things, then decided they didn't need that fire station, which isn't what our recommendation is—we believe both the City of Issaquah and City of Samamish happen to need that fire station. They could say, "We're going to close that." Then there's the question of, "Well, is it serving Issaquah more, so there's going to be some higher level of cost to that?" I know that in the process right now, they've done a market analysis of what that fire station is, and they're doing some other work on it. I unfortunately am not standing here. I don't have that number for you.
Is—if there's an annexation of the Kohani PAA, does that increase that 7%?
It does. You'll roughly—District 10, which is this area here, is roughly 30%, 34% of that fire station's—that assessed valuation. So by the way, the ILA works between EFER and its partners, that would now become under the City of Issaquah.
Well, I'll just go on record and say, I think it's silly and counterproductive for one of the partners to withdraw from EFER. It provides great benefit and value for not only the citizens of Issaquah, but also this entire Eastside and its members. And I—I just think it's—it's not a good road to travel down for that to be considered. So I'm glad that we're a partner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah. The public hearing on the annexation of Kohani that was held at Challenger Elementary, I went to that one, and I heard a number of questions from—from residents there concerned about Fire Station 83. And—and of course, that was logical. That—that made sense to me. I would have similar concerns if I was up there. Now, interestingly, at that time, it wasn't as clear as it is now with recent actions as cited in this resolution, and is that, like we said, there could be a change. It's possible, and we know that Samamish is considering leaving Eastside Fire and Rescue. They've mentioned about possibly then potentially closing that station. And, you know, at the public hearing—or the public meeting at Challenger, the representatives from Issaquah, we told the audience there that when it came to fire, and I think this is repeated in the Nesbit Study as well, that their services would continue to be provided by Fire District 10, and that their level of service wouldn't change following annexation. And I get that. However, this would be a change. And—and it—and so the idea—that that station could be closed would impact them. And so I think it's a sign of really good faith from our city to the residents of Kohani that should these events unfold like, you know, as has been told, that Fire District 10 and we, the City of Issaquah, are taking proactive steps to assure that we can do our best possible job to live up to that commitment to provide the best possible fire and emergency services to Kohani should it be annexed, and should these other—should —should Samamish leave the partnership, should they close that station? I'm—I'm—I'm proud to say that that District 10 and Issaquah are—and EFER are working together to make sure we live up to the commitment we made during this annexation hearing process. Thank you.
Right? So Eastside Fire and Rescue, as a consortium, provides that service, that specific area is covered by 10? Correct? Yes. Okay. Other questions or discussion on the resolution before you? Yes, Councilmember Butler.
I think this also sends a strong message to our residents at Providence Point also, who have expressed concerns recently over the future of Station 83, since that is the first responding station for fire service and medical support needed at Providence Point. And a number of folks have asked me and expressed concerns about, you know, what happens if Samamish pulls out? And, you know, are you going to buy Station 83, or is it going to be there for us when we need it? And so I think this is a— sends a strong message, not only to the Kohani potential annexation area, but our residents at Providence Point, that we're serious about maintaining the appropriate level of service for folks with Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Yes, Councilmember Barber.
Just one other statement in regards to—I mean, we've been speaking this evening in regards to the potential, excuse me, annexation area, also about Providence Point. But I think the broader statement we need to, and I'd like to be saying this evening, is that the City of Issaquah is very serious and very dedicated to providing very high-quality fire and emergency services to all of our communities within our area. And I think currently, we are experiencing that very high quality and—through Eastside Fire and Rescue, and we are dedicated to remain in a partner.
Fire and Rescue, and we are dedicated to remain in a partner, irregardless of what is going on, because we are now currently receiving those services and want to maintain that service level. So, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Is the council ready to act then on the motion to approve Resolution 2012-12 regarding commitment to fire? Whoops, sorry about that. 2013. Dash 12. Can't read my own handwriting. Regarding commitment to fire and emergency services. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. Now, the next item before this, the council this evening is good of the order, and there were some questions raised during audience comments having to do with the bag ban. And that is something that I would ask our city attorney, Mr. Tanaka, to speak to in terms of the options for council action, and by what time those options would need to be recognized and acted upon.
Yes, thank you. The RCWs provide that the council has two options. One is to enact the ordinance that the petition put forward in its entirety without alteration, or have the matter referred to the voters for a vote, and that would have to be at the next election, which is in February. And those are the essential options that the council has. This must be done, it's a little unclear from the law, but my opinion, it has to be done within 20 days of the date that the county certified the sufficiency of the petitions, which would mean that you'd have to take action by the next meeting, or have a special meeting within the next day or two after that to meet the 20 days.
Councilmember Mertz.
I had read that an April vote was also an option, is that not the case?
I don't believe so. It says the first election, that's more than 45 days away from the certificate unless there's a general election within 90 days, I believe. But we can't make the general election, as you well know.
Thank you.
So, other questions on that? It appears that then items will be coming forward at the next council meeting for council action.
Right. At that time, either to take action or at least definitively direct which way it's going.
Which way to go.
The, I understand the deadline for having matters placed on the February ballot was sometime in the end of November approximately. So even though the law says you must take action within 20 days, I think as long as we got it on the November, or the February ballot, that would be sufficient, or enact the ordinance. Either one.
Any additional questions on that process? Okay. Other items for good of the order? Yes, Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at the last Sound Cities Association Public Interest Issues Committee, I want to, yes, I always mess that up. There was a first look at a potential recommendation to the SCA Board of Directors on product stewardship policy. So the, the language that was discussed was, "The Sound Cities Association supports product stewardship approaches that enhance our existing reuse, recycling, and waste management systems by requiring product manufacturers to be responsible for their products that contain toxic and hazardous materials." The conversation then led to that word "requiring." So I think what's likely to occur at the next SCA PIC meeting is there will be sort of four options that'll be bandied about, we don't really, I guess "bandied" is the right word, but will be discussed, that language, an option that would say, "Let's review product by product as issues come forward," and you could look at individual issues like paint or other options. The third option would be to use the King County Legislative language, which is, "We support development of cradle-to-grave product education, stewardship, recycling, and take-back programs for products for which improper disposal is likely to result in hazardous waste, water quality contamination or other solid waste impacts, including pharmaceuticals and medicines, computers and other electronics, carpet, telephone books, and mercury and fluorescent lighting sources." Note that that does not have sort of any prescriptive language associated with it, but is more aspirational. And then finally, there is the AWC position, last but not least, which is, "Support legislation to establish and improve producer-funded systems for convenient and environmentally sound recycling of waste products, including paint and rechargeable batteries." Paint and rechargeable batteries being of particular interest, because I believe there was an effort at the state level to do something on this issue in the last legislature, and it did not go anywhere. So those are the options that are going to be discussed at the PIC, and I wanted to bring it forward to this council and get a sense from the body as to how it would like to, some sense of how it would like to direct me on this issue. So don't all speak up at once. I guess the fundamental question that I have is, there's sort of two classes of options here, right? Prescriptive and not prescriptive, right? So the, the language that's in front of SCA PIC, as well as to some extent the AWC position, are both advocate for sort of prescriptive legislation, and the other two options do not. So does anybody have, does anybody want to share with me at this time, any thoughts on these options? Or should I just feel free to wing it? Anyone?
Just a question. So what's driving Sound Cities Association to come up with a policy on this? What is this, you know, trying to mirror King County, or all of the jurisdictions struggling with this issue? I know that there was some discussion around, you know, recycling, or, you know, how do you dispose of prescription medicine and things like that? Is this an extenuating, extension of that discussion?
I get the sense that it's so that it's to give guidance to the legislators towards the next state session. Yes. As to how Sound Cities might feel collectively on this issue.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you. If you have any further thoughts, feel free to let me know. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilmember Barber. Oh, I was going to say, it appears that in the words of the famous cricket in Pinocchio, "Always let your conscience be your guide."
Thank you, I will try.
I think he was Jiminy, but. All right, moving right along.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, if I could this evening, put on my Salmon Days Festival Committee Chair hat for just a brief moment, and wanted to thank everybody that attended the festival and everybody that volunteered at the festival. And just a quick heads up, you know, we have over 500 volunteers that helped put this festival together. It's a huge community outreach, and well over 150,000 to 200,000 guests, we never quite know, we don't take account anyways, so we don't sell tickets. All of it's free, everything is free. So the committee, the core committee is about 25 people, we work year-round to put this together, everything from the bands to volunteer coordinator chair to parade chair, so all those little elements that you don't get to see. But, and a special thank you to the city. We always have a saying as we get ready and then finalize and clean up, that we're going to leave this city in better shape when we leave than it was when we received it on Friday night. And we did our last wrap-up this morning, walking the field of fun, picking up every little sucker stick. And I think we have done a very good job in returning the city back. And we want to thank everybody that had a great time, and everyone that participated in helping us put on another great festival. So thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Forcher.
Something I was going to mention earlier that I didn't, now mention now, is that I did attend the State Auditor's Exit Conference. It was a real education for me. They don't give letter grades, they don't even give grades that say you're good, they just give grades that said, "You're not bad." And all of the things that they had to say about us were not bad. There were, there were two, two things that they mentioned that had to do with accounting that, that staff has already been working on to take care of, and everything else, it was, it was, there were no material misstatements, no significant deficiencies, no instances of non-compliance. So it was a very good exit conference, and we passed with flying colors.
Thank you. Thank you for noting that. Any other items for good of the order? There is no executive session this evening, and we are adjourned at 8:42 PM.